Good evening, everyone. Pleasure to be with you tonight. So just wanted to share briefly with you all. Michelle had reached out to me and mentioned that you all were interested in learning a little bit more about how your work could align with our Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan. So what I'm going to do is give a quick overview of our plan, a little bit about how it was developed, highlight our six goals, how you can read our plan, just sort of a quick synopsis of that, and then really where you can see our plan in action, and then talk about what that really means for PZB. So I think it's important to know that the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan is a community plan. It was developed through collective effort and engagement. Our first ever strategic plan was adopted in 2018. You can see on the screen before you, a number of elements were contained within that plan. The plan was not created in a vacuum, nor was it intended to be used that way. With all of the components that were in that 2018 plan, it was designed to be a guide. It wasn't designed to be a task list or a checkbox of work for anyone to accomplish. Our plan was updated in 2021. We worked really hard collectively with the community and with staff to streamline those planned elements, and we created a comprehensive plan document. It has an introduction, it has, of course, our plan, it also has a reference section and a glossary of terms. So on the screen before you now is our six goals of the Connect Morrisville Plan. Across the top, under the bottom, or at the bottom, in the lighter green portion, is the descriptive statement of each of those goals. Each goal also has individual objectives, initiatives, and outcome measures that support the work of that goal. And so we're going to go a little bit deeper. So if you look at our plan, just sort of at a glance, it may be a little bit overwhelming. There's a lot of information there to digest. So this is a quick guide and tutorial to sort of walk you through what each of these components are and what they mean. So arrow number one is pointing to our mission, and that is our purpose. That's our reason for existence. Arrow number two points to our vision, and our vision should sort of tell you what that is. It's a word picture of our future. You should be able to visualize what that means. Arrow number three is our core values. Those are the principles that govern our behavior and the way that we do business. Arrow number four is pointing to those six goals that we just saw in the previous slide. Those are broad statements of measurable outcomes, and then we'll drill down a little bit more from here. Arrow number five is pointing to our objectives, and that's everything on that line where arrow number five is. That's really our first definitive step towards what we're going to do, what we hope to accomplish. Arrow number six, there, sort of in the middle to the right, is our initiatives. So that drills down even a little bit further into how we plan to accomplish our objectives and goals. Many of our initiatives are process, procedure, or project oriented. They're very action oriented. And then arrow number seven, at the bottom in the middle, is our outcome measures. So that is, how are we going to measure the success of these previously outlined portions of our plan? So if you want to know what our plan looks like in action, you can always check out our plan webpage that's on the town website. We have periodic updates there when we have pertinent information to share. You can also look at Morrisville Pro, which is our community dashboard. Excuse me. We have some major projects linked there. We also have our department plans. We have some high-level graphic plan information. Also, for each item that goes before Town Council, we include what we call an Agenda Brief Supplement. So that's the image there in the middle. Those documents show the alignment of what we think that item is going to do for our plan. So the one that you see here is a sample from item 2021-407. It was a rezoning considered last fall by PZB for 3713 Davis Drive, so I'm going to come back to that in a moment. Also, just from the daily work that staff does in carrying out our mission, our vision, our core values, all of that implements and engages in Connect Morrisville for us. So now that you're a little more oriented with our plan, I want to spend a few minutes talking about how PZB can really use the Connect Morrisville Plan as a resource for your work. I think that was really sort of the overall intention, but I thought it was important to lay that groundwork. So looking at this image really may not mean a whole lot, but if we think back to those broader six goals, that green slide, those supporting statements, and then consider those objectives and those initiatives, what is it that we want to do? What is it that we hope to accomplish? Keeping all of that in mind, when reviewing your documentation, the items that come before PZB, I think that will help you sort of to remember those things that are of importance to the community. Again, town staff remains committed to aligning our work with the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan, so we can always assist. I heard Planning Director Stiegel say once that the criteria for reviewing a lot of these items comes from case law, you've got to provide reasonable standard, because it's very subjective. It's not black and white. So that's why I chose black and white for these images. Because there is a desire to have enhanced review for some items, particularly these that come before PZB, they come before this advisory board. The board is comprised of people who have a variety of backgrounds and a variety of experiences, so you can see things from different perspectives. You all may not see these images the same. You all may not interpret them the same. You all may not see them in black and white. There may be different shades of gray or different colors. So that just really helps to provide a depth of discussion and allows you to make an informed decision and recommendation to Town Council. So just wanted to flashback to that document 2021-407 for the rezoning of 3713 Davis Drive that I mentioned previously. It was a request to rezone from Neighborhood Activity Center to conditional corridor commercial. I reviewed your minutes to get some context of the questions and discussion that you had for that item. There were questions about uses that were allowed, not allowed, road widening, PIL for road widening, consistency with the adopted land use plan, all very much true to what your role is in reviewing rezoning cases. I also read your advisory statement to Town Council related to consistency of use, which was motion seconded and recommended unanimously. That item in particular aligns with a number of elements in our Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan, a lot of them in Goal Number One and Goal Number Two that really sort of stood out to me. So I just sort of wanted to share that I think it makes sense that strategic planning is not always laid out in black and white, but it's sort of visionary and long-range. And I think a lot of what PZB does is visionary and long-range. You're thinking forward, you're planning for the future, you have to sort of take into perspective what is here now and what is happening now, and apply that to a future point in time in many cases. So it's really laying out all the pieces that you have and seeing where they fit. So the image here is just really what I've tried to do is convey some of the components of our strategic plan within each of our six goals at a really high level, and then I want to sort of give some general examples, and I would love for you all to jump in and sort of tell me what you see, and then I'll share with you sort of what I saw, and we'll see sort of how that variety of interpretation comes about. So the top-left image, so it's the white puzzle piece with the car and the traffic signal, that is related to Goal Number One, improve transportation mobility. If anyone wants to take a stab at it, what does that mean to you? It's not a trick question, I promise.
Sanjay would say something.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's maybe just all about the ease and variety of transportation options to allow folks to get to where they need.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think improving transportation mobility is also, it speaks to providing more public transit so that people can get from location to location, not relying on their car.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So what I did was just pull some key words from the elements within Goal One of the Connect Morrisville Plan. Transit, supporting infrastructure, mobility options like greenways, sidewalks, bike paths, regional traffic light timing, electronic vehicles, smart signals, intersection improvements. So again, it's much more than black and white. It's a whole variety of things. And so I think once you start to have discussion, again, really applying to PZB, then you start to see, so Tim may have seen it from a different perspective than Josh did. Both are right. It applies in both situations. But then you can have that discussion and really sort of see where maybe you all think it might best fit collectively. So I have a couple more examples. If I'm running over my time, feel free to tell me to stop and we can move on. So the next one is the bottom-left puzzle piece. So it's the black piece with some houses and some greenery, and that is Goal Number Two. That's our thriving livable neighborhoods goal. So looking at that image, what does that bring up for you? What does that conjure to you just thinking about, in Morrisville, maybe related to items that would come before PZB, thriving livable neighborhoods?
I mean, to me, it just means places where people want to live, where they can enjoy their life, where they can, you know, feel comfortable.
Okay. You guys are never this quiet.
David, you're brand new. I mean, you're...
I suppose to me, the image conveys, you know, the different types of housing options for all kinds of affordability levels across Morrisville. And having shared spaces, green spaces, parks for those folks to connect, I think that diversity is one of the great strengths of our community, and so I think having options that are available to everybody is an important part of the future.
Either David gets a gold star, he saw my notes. So I feel sort of, and please tell me if I'm misinterpreting, but I feel like Lee and David sort of said the same thing, but using different terms. So again, there's some of the key words from elements under Goal Two in the Connect Morrisville Plan, housing options, consistency with guiding documents for infrastructure. So think land use plan, Parks and Rec Master Plan, our Town Center Plan, our Master Sustainability Plan, all of those broader documents that help get us to the end goal. Preserving natural space, creating program space, redevelopment, energy efficiency. So again, I feel like you both sort of were getting to the same point, saying it a different way. So we'll do one more. The bottom right, the black puzzle piece with images of safety officers, that's Goal Number Four, public safety readiness. So what does that, what does that sound like? What does that mean to you? How would you describe it?
Just providing, you know, our first responders and others, the training, the equipment, all the resources that they need to help the town stay safe and to respond to unsafe things.
Yeah. So some of the buzzwords from Goal Number Four in the Connect Morrisville Plan, we really revamped this goal to sort of take a look at before, during, and after an emergency event, so preparation, response, and recovery. Data that supports those efforts, resources for our community, collaborating with community and regional partners. So not just police and fire, or not just first responders, but really that full front-to-end process of how to get through an emergency, being prepared so maybe you can avoid that emergency, or if an emergency occurs, do you have the resources that you need to recover from it? So it's really a long-winded way to really sort of say, I think there's a lot of ways that you guys can reference the Connect Morrisville Strategic Plan as a resource, and just sort of keep it as a tool in your toolbox. When you start to review any of the items that come before PZB, again, staff is always at the ready to assist you, and we are happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you.
Couple of questions.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, no mind. So first of all, I think the streamlining of goals is fabulous. I mean, it makes it much more clear to understand and get that sorted. I guess two questions, the first being, you know, are those goals weighted in any way? So, you know, think about, you know, balance scorecard. Everything's important, but there's levels of importance. So if I compare them, are they all, you know, six equally weighted in the mind, or is it difference one to the other?
Now, that's an excellent question, Tim. So since this is really only our second stab at our strategic plan work, we have not taken it that far, but as of this point, each of these goals really are equally important to us. It doesn't mean that there may not be more activity in one than the other, but they are all equally as important to the town.
And then the second question, kind of related to that is, sometimes we wrestle with things that come in conflict or appear to come in conflict. So you could have an economic prosperity goal that could come in conflict with a transportation goal or vice versa. You know, what's the guidance that you guys do when you come into those conflicts, and do you see those as conflicting items?
So that's an interesting question and probably an interesting perspective. I think that's why we really captured, particularly in Goal Number Two, the element that we have to remember that while our strategic plan is a guide, it's also not definitive. It is subjective. And then we also included in that Goal Number Two, all of the supplementary sort of guiding documents that we have, and that was one of the things we wanted to do. We wanted to be able to have a place to house all of those so that we could reference, okay, if we're, if we're trying to prepare long-term for, I'll just say, development in very broad, general terms, then we need to think about land use, and we need to think about parks, and we need to think about sustainability. And so all of those different guiding plans are in that thriving livable neighborhoods goal, so that they can all sort of be accessed and referenced together.
Anyone else? Christine?
I think it's good. I use it. I like to go online and read before I come.
Yay!
A little geek, though. I have my own little world.
You know, they have to submit their sort of responses to these. You know, that's one of the reasons why it's good, you know, in the package, so that's helpful. Ken? I think that's good. That's an excellent overview. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Aaron.
You're welcome.
Before we go forward, I just want to make sure, so we alternate alternates. So Sanjay's not here, so you are the full member today, David. So you will have an opportunity to make a motion later on, if you prefer to do that.
I appreciate it. Thanks. All right, good evening. You ready for me?
Yes, we are.
All right. All right, so good evening, Planning and Zoning Board. Chris Lawson.
Can you hear him?
Can you hear me? I'll speak a little louder. All right, so good evening, Chris Lawson, Planning Manager. Tonight, I'm going to do a hopefully brief presentation on potential UDO text amendments to the tree preservation, common open space, and landscaping sections of the UDO. Kind of what I'm informally calling this tonight is a pre-brief on potential text amendments, meaning we're not going to present specific language, but I do want to prep the Planning and Zoning Board on some broad staff recommendations, take some questions, gauge your interest in certain ideas, and also present the results of some public outreach staff has done. So, you know, at the chairperson's discretion, feel free to please stop me if you have questions, want to make a comment, anything along the way.
Okay.
Yeah. So here are my presentation goals tonight, fairly self-explanatory, so again, give you, give the board an update on future scheduling, an update to the amendments, present some key results from public outreach and surveys from both town residents and the development community, and then provide some broad staff recommendations, and then talk about future scheduling. So first, let me go over some recent text amendments that the board has heard. These are all since 2020. Won't really dive into what they are necessarily, but I will say, you know, some of them have been very big changes, some have been kind of more tweaks to the UDO, but I think staff's been very satisfied with the direction these have gone for the most part, and really looking forward to getting into the tree preservation section, open space, landscaping. So what's the status of the text amendments? Where have we been? What's the plan moving forward? So I believe I was before this board last July, kind of discussing some preferences, asking for your guidance on certain ideas. Since then, we have, staff has completed outreach to the public, and basically tonight, again, I want to serve as a pre-brief, kind of get everybody up to speed and discuss some ideas. We do not plan on returning to the April meeting. We instead plan to use the month of April to prepare specific amendments, post them online, get some feedback from town residents, from developers. I believe I might do a similar presentation at Town Council sometime in the month of April. And then May, we plan to come back to the Planning and Zoning Board to present the specific amendments, the actual text. So let me, let me jump into some of the public outreach staff has done. So first off, two online surveys, one aimed at town residents, one aimed at the, what I've called the development community, which could mean commercial property owners, civil engineers, landscape architects, folks similar to that group there. We also held a, an online forum with the development community several weeks ago. We had 14 site designers and developers attend, and I'll say, so we've got a good idea of what town residents are looking for within these sections of UDO, and then we held that, that meeting with developers, and I think that meeting was really beneficial. It, I was somewhat worried it was going to turn into just developers saying, we don't want any of this, we don't want trees, we don't want any of this. But I think they understood the town's got some goals, development community recognizes those goals, and they want to kind of work with staff to reach those while also advocating for clearly their own position. So that's another reason I want to post the text online, is I think what I kind of tried to drive home to developers and site designers was, some of this stuff's going to change, how can the town and private developers kind of collaborate to make the best product to work, to work for all parties? So let's just move into some, some survey results. So the first group is resident surveys, and let me start by saying, these are going to be your numbers, your answers, answers to questions that kind of had yes or no responses, or, you know, pick your priority order. Attachment two was written responses to open-ended questions. So if you haven't had a chance to review that, it's maybe five or six pages, some really interesting, interesting stuff in that group.
How many people did you have respond? I noticed there was like 91 comments or two on the most, but...
Yeah.
People that left no comment? I mean...
There were quite a few that left no comments. So residents, we had probably only a quarter, I think there was around, it was 400 to 450 response total. Not a lot left comments. I think it's much easier just to click. The developers, almost all of them left pretty detailed responses. That's another attachment. And then that reminds me, some of my percentages don't add up to 100. What I realized later was some people skipped certain questions, so they should be close, but it might be off a little bit. So I'll just get into some of the questions. So, you know, were you aware that the town had requirements for tree preservation, common open space, and landscaping? The responses were, were lower than I think I anticipated, particularly tree preservation. And if I think back to a presentation I had at Town Council on this board last year, I heard a lot of things such as, we want trees to be more visible. So I think that kind of, that kind of lines up. I don't want to distract too much just from one question, but that kind of is in line with what I've heard. Next one, do you visibly notice these items when you drive around town? Again, results kind of speak for themselves, kind of fairly low in my view. Let's move on. So building on that, what is your, this is specifically for tree preservation, what's your satisfaction with the required amount or location? I had five responses. About a quarter respondents were, said they were unaware the town even had, had these Pretty low on the very satisfied. Some could use improvement, but generally satisfied decent amount, so. And then it seems a fairly decisive answer, number 12, do you prefer greater amount of tree canopy preservation by far and away was the highest? Yeah. So I'm moving kind of fast. Any comments, questions, thoughts right now? Seeing none, okay. So this question is rank your, your preferences. So, and I bolded, number five was actually the top preferred, number one was the least. And, you know, this question was very, this question was interesting to me because, I skipped a slide. Sorry. All right, I skipped a page. So this question stands out because this is currently how the town regulates which trees have to be saved. It is dependent on the type of tree, meaning deciduous trees are first, mixes of deciduous and evergreens are second in priority, very large trees is the third priority, and then the fourth priority is just whatever's left after that, as far as what trees have to be saved in order. So, and why, why it kind of particularly stood out to me was it, there wasn't really a clear consensus, I think, when I read these results, as to, is there a preference on the type of tree that, that folks want to be saved? Yeah.
I think it's pretty clear, looking at the comments, that people just want trees, and they don't think as much about the actual tree. They just want trees.
Yes, I agree. All right, so this, this next question's also a little interesting to me because it gets into taking into consideration the location of trees on site, which seemed to be what I heard from both Town Council and this board last year when I did a similar presentation. And so, sorry, I got, mixed up my notes again. So again, top preferred is on the far right. Trees that are in environmentally sensitive areas was the lead, followed up by preserved trees close to sidewalks and streets, and then preserved trees close to other stands of preserved trees. So I think, I think that, that's a little clearer than the previous question, which is the type of tree. Still a little vague, but the environmentally sensitive areas was the top result on this, and I believe the top results on also the developer survey, which we'll get to later on in my presentation. So move on to just general landscaping questions. So these are more aimed at landscaping and parking lots, so shrubs around parking areas, perimeter landscaping, you know, the new trees you see planted on a new development site around the edge, and similar to that. So just again, you know, what's your general level of satisfaction with required mount type? This was a little more positive, could use improvement, but generally satisfied. And then this question 17, what is your preferred character? This one was interesting to me, seems fairly decisive. Folks seem to prefer natural growth containing varieties of heights, widths, distributed Folks seem to prefer natural growth containing varieties of heights widths distribution. So if you think about the more, what I'm calling natural growth, it's not as regulated as far as a landscaper planting one new tree every 10 feet at a same size, and it's growing together. It's a little variety in there.
I have a comment. Do you feel the way the questions were phrased that, when I read through the comments, I almost felt like several people were commenting that they just didn't want development, and their desire to have the natural landscape and the trees was just, I want it to be the same way. So I saw on the one question that it was so heavily weighted, we want more trees, not less trees. And here you're seeing the variety of trees. They're describing that forest look of, I want it, I don't want the development, so I.
Yeah, I think that could, yes. There was a lot of passion in the written responses, I found, yeah. I think I, we did our best with some of the questions. I do think it was a little subjective, you know, our own views kind of got into it. But yeah, I agree that this response might be, we just want preserved entirely, not we want, yeah, that abuse, yeah. Okay, so let's move on to slide 12, where are my notes? Lot of words on this slide, but really this refers to common open space and parkland dedication. So if we remember, common open space is for non-residential developments. Parkland dedication is for residential development specifically. So the top question, just, you know, what would you be in favor of using common open space for? It seems to be, the leader is removing common open space if replaced with additional tree canopy. Second one was allowing public art to be included as an option. That is something the UDO kind of references, not really, I'm doing more research into how can we get that public art more involved in common open space potentially? And then question 20 is about, should those residential developments have to pay a payment and allude to the town for parkland space? Or should they actually dedicate land out of their development for parks? Last year, I presented to Town Council on this, this board, also the Parks Recreation and Cultural Advisory Committee on this question. I think I heard from all three boards, we were really not sure. I myself as staff, I'm not really sure if there's a great answer on this. And then the results were pretty split also. I'll get into this later, but I don't know if we're going to propose any changes to that section of the UDO to kind of balance it one way or the other. So my general takeaways from, from the survey. First thing is, residents aren't necessarily aware that the town requires tree preservation, landscaping, or any of these other items. I think it's pretty clear, they'd prefer a greater amount of tree canopy be preserved with development. Folks don't really seem to have a distinct preference on the types of trees that are preserved, though naturally wooded areas are preferred over, you know, manicured landscape spaces. And then people would prefer tree preservation in environmentally sensitive areas or next to larger grouping of trees. Environmentally sensitive areas, in my mind, refer to wetlands, flood zones, repairing buffers, but could also refer to, you know, if there's an identified endangered species, and a few other things. So that is the resident survey section of my presentation. Are there any comments, questions?
Just a quick one on the, actually, first couple of questions. A lot of them, obviously, all preference questions. The first couple, is there like a desired awareness that you want to get to? So if you did this survey in a year, would you expect the needle to move on awareness? And is there a target around that? So 50% awareness is great, and that's what we're shooting for.
So that's an interesting question. So if, I didn't include these questions in the presentation because I wanted to limit it to the policy, but the first few questions were things such as, you know, are you aware that there are requirements? Are you aware of Morrisville's borders? So are you in Cary thinking that Morrisville is, they're using Morrisville's regulations? Some things like that. I think some, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I think greater marketing of some Morrisville's requirements would be a good thing. I don't know if the 450 folks are that going to change it that much, but what I'm hearing from the survey is that when people drive around town, just anecdotally, they're not noticing some of these requirements. So I think part of my personal goal as staff in this amendments are to maybe make people more aware, just not necessarily through marketing, but they drive around, they see sites that are preserving more trees, or more visible.
I think you probably are right, though, because given the number of projects we have had going on in Morrisville the last couple of years, I mean, there are some, but I think, you know, people are driving around, they're seeing a lot of things that are in Cary also. And especially given the borders, you know, they're pretty entangled. So it would be difficult for the average person to even know, you know, what was going on, where a project was located, you know. So I do think there probably is some spill over there.
I agree, and I, if you read, there's at least one or two responses in the written surveys that mentions Bond Park. And I think that's pretty deep into Cary.
It is, but I mean, I think they were, I can see why. That was just a question asking generally, like, what's an area that you think did a good job on preserving trees? So I don't, are we going to get into those later? I mean, because I had a couple of comments about some of that. I mean, because I thought it was very interesting that several people cited Breckenridge as a good example of trees being saved. Well, Breckenridge is almost all clear cut. I mean, there are some areas there that were too steep to build on, you know, whatever that have been left. And but Breckenridge was a clear cut subdivision, like pretty much all subdivisions are. They're slightly affordable. So I think it's interesting that people are seeing Breckenridge as a, I mean, there was at least eight, I think, that were citing that. So, you know, what is, is there something different about Breckenridge? What's different about Breckenridge than maybe other communities? Is it just age? Do they use different trees? That, you know, that people said, hey, this is a great example.
They did.
I mean, you know, and how can we apply that, I guess, to what we're doing now? And was there anything different? Is it just because they particularly, like I said, picked certain trees? Or just, you know, they got bigger with time? I don't know.
My, I had the same thought. My suspicion is, well, Breckenridge is in an old neighborhood, it is a little older, so trees have had some time to grow. But it's also next to the RTP where the sites have been completely undisturbed and won't be probably for some time.
Right, right, that could be that as well. And I guess, you know, it is hard to know now, seeing that, like, you know, if you could have delved deeper to try to find, because you could also sense a lot of frustration. There's a lot of NAs in there, and some people were like, I don't have time for this. So, I mean, there was clearly, you know, you can, I know you can only get so many answers out of someone before they start to kind of feel like it's not worth their time. And that sort of did show through a little bit. But I just thought that was really interesting that, you know, and then they cited Church Street Park, which, you know, again, is up against a couple of areas that are sort of not developed for different reasons, be it sort of the edge of RTP or wherever else. But, you know, there's not a lot of trees preserved within the footprint of the actual park. I mean, it's a field and some parking lots, and all that was cut down. Or I can't remember, maybe most of it was, I mean, some of these areas were farmland at one time, and so the cutting has been done a long ago. But yeah, those were just examples that stood out to me in the comments of things that I wouldn't have thought people would have necessarily thought as a good example, but.
Anything else? All right, so I'll move on to the developer survey, some of their results. So first thing is, you know, how, please identify your level of experience developing projects last five years. Mostly a medium, one to one or more projects. And I'll say, the developers forum we had, it was a lot of the same people that develop a lot of the same projects. What I've noticed is, some of the private firms, they kind of have one person that's specific to Morrisville or Cary, and they kind of get to know the staff a little bit and know the process. So first question, or the first question five. Would you be open to the town requiring existing tree canopy to be preserved along the front property line? Very few yeses, some maybes. What I heard in the forum was, we're not completely opposed, but we're very worried about my retail stores, the visibility, you know, pointing out a few specific sites around the area that say, look, you know, when it was first built, you could see it, and there's nice trees. But now they're so big, you can't read the signs. Worried about that long-term viability, especially with some of the structural changes in, you know, the economy.
And I know exactly, because I have been thinking of this. I mean, I'm on this board, so I'm thinking about things in a different way than a lot of people. But, I mean, I knew that this was coming up at some point, and I always look at, like McCrimmon Corners. So that's, you know, that was a subdivision that was built 15 years ago, maybe. And it, you know, has trees planted all in the front. And between that and like a small, little swale or whatever there, like, you really can't see back to that Chalmers Center now. But not, but yet there's no canopy because the trees just there are just almost like bushes now. I mean, so I thought that, in my opinion, is kind of a bad example. I mean, you've got trees there, but to what end? I mean, you've kind of, I mean, like, especially in a retail. In a residential, you would want that, more of a solid buffer. But like in a retail, I think, don't people want to be able to see what's there? I mean, I think even people who want trees still would like to be able to drive by and say, hey, there's a place I want to go. And I think that benefits them, and it benefits the businesses there, too. So I always wondered about that, as those trees have gotten bigger, like, what, you know, why does that look, at least to me, I don't know many of those things? Why does that not look good in my mind? Like, when you see other places, I mean, I've been in plenty of shopping areas that were in tree canopied locations, but the trees were towering over, and they were, you had the trunk, you could see through, and yet you still had the shade. You know, you still have the greenery and the cooling effect of the trees. Like, those trees aren't even really providing any kind of heat island dissipation. So I mean, I don't, again, know many of those things about that. But I just thought that was an example that looks like maybe it would have been better to have had more trees within the site rather than on the edge of the site because people that use the site don't benefit from the edge.
Right, you said McCrimmon Corners, like Harris Teeter.
Yeah. Like, if you drive by Davis Drive, now it's to the point where you can barely see what's there. I mean, like, you can't really see any of the signs or anything.
Yeah. Yeah, especially with the elevation change from Davis Drive.
Right, I mean, there's a little bit of that, and then, like I said, there's a little bit of a hump there. I mean, I don't know, I just, again, I'd love to hear anything about things. Maybe I can drive by there and sort of think about it. But it's just, to me, just seems like it would have been better to have had the trees in different locations, but.
Anything else? All right, let's keep going to the next slide. So this question basically describes the way trees are required to be preserved and which order now. Again, it's based on the type of tree. The answer is switch. So the most preferred is actually on the left side, least preferred's on the far right side. And this kind of, I'm sorry, I mis, I described the question incorrectly. Basically, this asks, how would you prefer the town create a priority order? Overwhelmingly, developers said, you know, in relation to environmental features, trees that are in floodplains, wetlands, repairing buffers. Second highest was the larger types of trees. So 24 inches in caliper or over.
Yeah, I think with that question, too, I mean, it does seem logical that developers would prefer trees that are in areas that they can't build in.
Right.
I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer when you know that you can't build somewhere already, that that's where you want to save all your trees. I mean, and that is nice, and I think that's maybe part of what, like Breckenridge, you know, as well. But I think most people would prefer to have more trees within the property itself rather than, you know, because that's almost kind of that edge. I mean, yes, you're blocking it from things, but, but it does seem like, yeah, if I can't build a house there, I want to keep trees there because I have to.
Yeah. All right, so then, so question seven, would you preserve additional trees if granted flexibility reductions to other UDO requirements? Again, most preferred is on the far left. Which, you know, which, which requirements would you want some reductions in? The top two were setbacks and overall lot coverage. And I think what we heard was, okay, if you're going to make us save more trees, we need some more flexibility on where the hard infrastructure can go, the building can go. You know, lot coverage is generally 65% of every site in Morrisville, most zoning districts. So they can only build on 65% of the site. Well, I think we heard, you know, if you increase that, maybe we could shift things elsewhere. And then setbacks just give more flexibility on where the building can be built. And we had some interesting comments, written comments to this question, too, about what other towns are doing, kind of what other flexibility, what specifics they would, developers would like. And then question nine, would you, how would you feel if the town? If, sorry, got tripped up. So if existing trees had to be preserved for perimeter landscape buffers, especially if we, if the town required one and a half or two times the required buffer width, would you utilize this option? Almost nobody said yes. Some things that are always brought up with existing trees are, you know, when a site's being developed, what we're told is, it's hard to save those trees, they're in the way. We're trying to, you know, we could have to regrade the entire site, and they kind of get in the way. So that's a lot of what I remember hearing in the forum. And the maybe was, was pretty high also, but it really was dependent on, we'd prefer not to be required, but we would prefer to have some incentives to save more trees. And then last question was about, about public art. Again, staff's researching a few options for public art and trying to encourage it. I think the results speak for itself. Yes, no, maybe, no was 0%, yes. And then maybe some written answers were, it depends on what you mean by public art. Depends on the costs. Certain things cost a lot more than current common open space requirements, so. And then my general takeaways. You know, civil engineers, landscape architects prefer a lot of flexibility on where the trees have to be saved within a development site. So, you know, and they, they were, they're the ones kind of designing the site, knowing the individual, specific grades of the site, specific other features. They want a lot of flexibility on where they can preserve trees. You know, one, in speaking with one of them, they said, look, if the town's goal is to save trees, can you just let me decide where that percentage? I'll meet the percentage, just let me decide where on site it can go, and basically remove a priority order entirely. Again, their highest preference is within environmental features. Seems to add up with kind of what you said, as far as, they have to save a lot of those trees anyways that are in wetlands or repairing buffers. You know, again, they express concerns of visibility. And then flexibility preferences on where a building can go on the, on the property and where parking can be placed on site. That was some of the written responses also. So before I move on from developer survey, resident survey, any questions, comments on those results?
Cloud formed.
Okay. So next, I'm going to move into what I've just titled a few slides as UDO refresher. Basically, I'm going to describe what are the regulations and how are they administered? So let's start with tree preservation. It's dictated by two regulations. So there's the retention standard table, which describes how many trees have to be saved on every site. And there's the priority order, bless you, which says which trees were on site. So two main regulations. So the retention standards table, 5.4 or 4A. Basically, you work it left to right. So you identify what percentage of a site is currently covered in tree canopy. So let's say it's 92 to 100%. You then move to the right and you say, am I building a neighborhood, an apartment, or am I building non-residential? If you're building non-residential, you use this column. So if your site's entirely covered in trees today, when you go to build, you have to save 10% of that tree canopy. So I have a little example at the bottom, if it helps you kind of understand. Basically, maybe the percentage of the existing trees have to be saved, and that's how it's regulated. Any questions about that? Okay. Next one is what I called, you know, which trees were on site? You know, what trees had to be saved? Again, four-step priority order based on the type of trees. So deciduous is first, then mixes of evergreens and deciduous trees, specimen trees, which are 24 inches or larger, those are your bigger mature trees. And then four, four is rarely used, but basically it's any trees that don't qualify for the first three. So generally, it's your less, non-mature pine trees or something like that. So if you're developing a site and you have priority one, the UDO basically makes you save all those priority one before you move on to the next, next phase. So what does that sometimes lead to? It sometimes leads to priority one is smack in the middle of a site, right where they want to put a dry vial, a building, and they have to figure out a way around that. So when, when, when this board is, you know, considering potential changes, I'd ask, is, does the priority one in the middle of a site, is that the town's goal? Is it really that deciduous trees you want to save? Or does it, does it, is it more important to save a tree, you know, elsewhere on the site? Does that, that question kind of makes sense? Does it? I don't know if it did or not, okay. Basically, does the location on the site matter, or does the type of tree matter? Because sometimes the type of tree really dictates the rest of the site design. And then in terms of regulation and designing, so both from regulation and staff and from designing a plan from a landscape architect's side, this can sometimes be difficult to regulate and verify and enforce. this can sometimes be difficult to regulate and verify and enforce. If you have a large site, you know, besides going onsite and looking at the trees yourself, sometimes it's difficult to tell. Where are the groups of deciduous trees? Where are the mixes of trees? Some of the sites, particularly if we're thinking along areas on the McCrimmon Extension, which have been undeveloped for years, there's just large groups of all kinds of trees. So sometimes what we get as far as staff when plans are submitted, a lot of that priority order two, because there's mixes of deciduous and evergreen trees. So that leads to, ultimately, if the entire site is a mixture of those kind of trees, what it leads to is developer gets to choose anyway where they get to save those trees. So that makes sense, if the entire site is priority two with a few specimen trees hopped in around it. So. So let's move on to some of what I've just defined as staff's broad recommendations. So the tree canopy retention standard, again, how many trees must be saved? It is currently a sliding scale based on the existing amount of tree canopy cover. Staff, a broad recommendation again, is establishing a flat percentage across all sites. So if I go back several slides, it's got the brackets for how many have to be saved. Just to, just get rid of that, just leave a flat percentage across all sites. And you'll notice we're not proposing a certain percentage tonight. I think we've still got some more thinking and research to do on what, what would that be, that number?
Just a quick question, with that, I know you haven't proposed, you know, what the percentage would be, but is that in context of here's the remaining sites, here's kind of the current view, the goal is to up the amount of trees and so we're going to present this site, this percentage?
Say it one more time.
So right now, you're looking at the level, so from 92 to 100 and then it goes down. You're going to, it sounds like you present an option to have a flat percentage across all sites.
Right.
So is the context, having looked at all open sites, that the recommendation of that percentage would get a higher, a higher number of trees? Based on that?
Yeah, so, so currently, so say a site's 100% covered in trees, they'd have to save 10%. I think the thought would be that that 10% would be raised somehow and then across the board, every site would have to save more. I think, is that there? Okay.
Yeah, because I was just looking like, just as it is now, like you have 100%, you have to save 10. If you go down the listing, by the time you get down to 6%, 6 to 40% coverage, you're down to only having to save under 3% of trees based on the scale. I mean, so your whole site would have 3% of it covered by trees. And then like I went to 38 and it's, and it's six, it's seven. So I mean, you know, you are going down. So I mean, the question is, is it, where is a fair point to? I suppose anything, even if you had a 10% for across the board, almost every one of these categories would be higher than it is now as far as was left behind.
Yeah. That's, that's what I expect. And when we come back in, or when I come back in May, I'm hoping to have some real world examples that we can go through to kind of at least theoretically compare what a site could look like versus.
Yeah, my math wasn't great. It was, you know, 10% of 100 trees, 1% of, you know, 10 trees, right? Were we trying to up it a little bit? That's what I was getting at.
Well, and that's the canopy cover too. It's like, it's not by the number of trees, it's like, yeah. So it is another added complication to it, you know, as well. It's because you have trees that have a very large canopy, or pine trees are a pretty small canopy.
That's right.
Are you considering density? So I didn't consider it to mean the number of trees that you were completely throwing away that system, where you're still going to have two sets of residential and non-residential? Or are you going to say flat out 10%? And if you don't have any trees, 10% of your property needs to be covered. And I'm not even going to tell you what the density is. I'm just going to say 10% of your property needs to have some kind of tree. Either it's there and you can take away 90% or you need to go plant trees. So if I fly over, I'm going to say this dotted area has trees. Because I'm cheap, so if it was somebody like me, I'm going to say, this tree is going to be an 80-foot span. I'm going to put one there.
Yeah, that's.
So how are you going to say, you know, if your property is kind of on the shy side of trees, what's going to be, what's a percentage look like?
And we get that question a lot. That's a good, yeah, the bigger, yeah. So, so let me, let me back up and kind of cover a few things. So the first thing is, yes, it's based on the aerial canopy, the canopy that we can see from an aerial image. That's how it's, that's how the square footage is determined. Then when the site's developed, a tree protection fence has to go one foot outside the drip line of that tree. So it could, you could actually have to save a little more than the minimum percentage. The second thing is Mooresville has granted local legislation to require, to allow, local legislation to require, to be allowed to require tree preservation. So we, we, the town does not require it for just single-family detached homes. To move forward to answer your question, yes, we are thinking about, I believe it's Apex, they have a certain percentage of, within a square footage area, there has to be this many trees to count as, you know, either replacement or, you know, bringing a site up to, say, say we still require 10%, you only have 8%. We got two more percent to add. You have to have a certain square footage and then a certain number of trees within that square footage. The, the other question I think you had was about existing trees and having larger trees and smaller trees. That's another question we get a lot and I've, I've thought about. And let me preface, I'm not an arborist or forester or anything, but what, what folks kind of tell us is, well, if we plant trees underneath these bigger trees, then are they going to survive and does that make the most sense? And then I think that it's the judgment as far as what's, what's the real goal of this? You know, is it, is it to preserve those bigger trees, is it not? So I don't think I've answered your question, but I, I'm thinking out loud now as I speak.
No, you did, you did.
That kind of goes back to why do we want a tree? I mean, why, why is a tree a desirable thing? I mean, is it a piece of art to look at or is it something that people can be sheltered under, shaded under? I mean, I guess, which is kind of like, you know, I've said in the past, I'm not a huge fan of pine trees because they don't really provide any shelter or shade or anything. They're just a tall stick that might one day fall on your house. You know, whereas like an oak tree, I think is what most people would say, oh, that's a beautiful tree because it has a really wide canopy and a lot of shade. And that kind of goes back to like, how are you calculating? Like if you had to replace a tree, I know we have the caliper inches we got to do, but is there any thought to the canopy of that tree? Like and in, at what stage in its life cycle is that number calculated or would it be calculated? Like if you're under this theoretical thing, you bring it up from eight to 10. Like, well, 8 to 10% measured by what? I mean, because it's 8 to 10% by the existing canopy, but a new tree is not going to have that canopy for 20, 30, however many years because we plant a sampling.
Right.
And I think that's what some of the comments sort of went into. It's like, hey, you tore down all the trees and you put in saplings. And so that, a lot of these comments were basically like, you're putting in these trees that don't really do anything for years and years and years. You know, and would we be better off requiring a few larger trees to be planted back rather than a whole bunch of small ones? I mean.
A lot of good points made, yeah. And, and something I'll say from the developers forum that I, I remember hearing is, some of the complaints we did hear was kind of, you know, the town kind of has a lot of goals, which sometimes conflict with each other. What is the real goal of some of these regulations and can you identify it? And as someone who's reviewed plans here for the last three and a half, four years, I kind of agree, sometimes the town's goals are very broad and want a lot, but aren't necessarily focused on one or specific thing. At least with the way UDOs, UDOs written. Yeah. Yes, sir.
So I do want to emphasize the point you made because I don't think a lot of people realize that there are no tree canopy retention standards for single-family detached. I think people don't, some residents don't realize that the town can't regulate that, unlike commercial or multifamily. But going to what Lee said, it's, seems like there's a point where it becomes just cumbersome for staff and for developers to quantify what that canopy is. And I'm curious if that, if, if staff has ever run into that where you're, you're just feeling like you're spending so much time trying to, to quantify what this percentage is, that it's, it feels burdening, burdening on, on the staff or?
Yeah, yeah, I, that's a, that's a great question. And some of my own goals out of this would be to make it easier to regulate because I think it not only benefits the town, staff, but it benefits the development and the town overall. So yes, to answer your question broadly, and one specific example is, you know, the tree protection fencing has to go one foot outside the drip line of a tree to be preserved. Well, the drip line of a taller tree can be broad and have other trees within it. So sometimes, I remember one particular call, they said, well, where do we end the fencing? Because then there's another tree and then there's another drip line, there's another tree. And at the end of the day, you have to say, okay, just pick, pick a line and let's, let's look at it and that's the line. Okay. So I don't remember the end of your question, but yes, we would like to make it easier to regulate, easier for not only landscape architects, just to kind of realize, realize immediately what's required, black and white, because that makes for better plans ultimately. It makes for, I think, better, better results in the end. So, I'll move on, okay. All right, so did I cover that one? Yeah, okay, sorry. So then priority order standards. So which trees are saved? So currently, again, it's based on the types of trees, not based on a location within a site. So what staff would like to recommend or is going to recommend broadly is base the priority order on a tree's location onsite. So a few examples, wetlands, repairing buffers, flood zones, or adjacent to town greenways, town preservation zones, tree preservation, sorry, and residential neighborhoods. So particularly if it's a commercial site, if they could, if the site could save a tree canopy next to an adjacent neighborhood for chance, I, I tend to think that's a better way to go about it than having specific trees. And again, back to the ease of regulation, I don't have to be a tree expert to look at a site and say, hey, there's a flood zone here. This is where the trees are saved. Here's the exact outline of where it goes when I, when I review a plan, for instance. So, so base it on the location onsite and then, in addition, require at least a small contiguous percentage of the site's streetscape to remain undisturbed. So if there are existing trees, maybe not across the entire site because that does lead to development complexities and then in the vision that we, the lack of sight of the development that we've heard from developers. But it may be a small contiguous percentage of the site's street, site's streetscape. Struggling site. If, if, if you all get a chance, right on the corner of Town Hall Drive and McCrimmon, there's a site that's under development currently. It is, I think it's a senior living facility, but they preserve trees right at the intersection of McCrimmon and Town Hall. And I have consistently heard that site referenced. It doesn't show up as much in the surveys, but I've consistently heard that's a site folks seem to like because there is a cluster of trees right at the corner. So an idea would be to have at least some percentage of undisturbed trees along the streetscape. So.
I would like to see some kind of option if that doesn't work for the developer. So that might be what everybody wants to see. But they want to bring bulldozers in, they want to, they want to build. So you have a root system that's going to impact the utilities, everything from the day you start to where your building is. And it definitely has to be set back for the year. When you have maybe three or four trees, you're half of a football field away before your building starts to go up. So you're really losing real estate. And then you might have something that's just not going to do well when you put concrete over the roots. And you have a completely different environment that you bring in. Maybe it takes a tree expert to come in and say, you know, we really need, we need to take down these old trees. They're just not going to do well once we pave around here. But there needs to be some option if that doesn't work. You just can't have a hard standard to say, we want this to look like forest when we down, drive down the street without the city owning that property. I mean, there has to be some happy medium to say, this really doesn't work with our beautiful glass, modern building and then we have this little thing of squirrels right on the corner. I mean, there, there has to be something else in there.
There, there was a comment, written comment about squirrels. I don't know if anybody saw it, it was, it was kind of funny. But you're, you're correct because we, we have other instances where there are maximum setbacks, yet also there are trees required in front of those buildings. And those seem to conflict in certain ways. So I'm not sure how to address it right now, but there was a, I think, again, I think it was Apex, they have a larger setback from the tree preservation area. So it was, I can't remember, say, so currently Mooresville would require one foot outside, outside the drip line, then you could immediately start building your parking lot. Apex had, I think, had a 10-foot setback from the tree preservation area where you couldn't build hard surfaces. So it's almost in essence a slightly bigger tree preservation area. So I, that might be an idea.
Yeah, and a lot of it's going to be the age of the tree because you really start to get into the roots of people want the big tree. I want to, you know, I want to keep this mammoth tree. And the developer looks at it and goes, oh my goodness, we can't even build anywhere near this. So you're going to hit those kind of questions. So you may as well just start to build it into what happens when these discussions come up and it just doesn't work from a utility or a design standpoint.
That's a very good point. And I think something that at least I've tried to do and I know other staff is, as soon as we call, talk to somebody the first time about this development, especially when they're getting serious about designing, we say, you got to look at the tree preservation. That's the first thing you want to take in mind because you're going to need to design your site around the trees. So don't, don't come to me three months later with, say, oh, I have to take all these trees. My, my, this is going to be the masterpiece of Mooresville here. We tell them upfront, the trees are the, the top priority. It has to be designed around the trees. But, but yeah, very good point.
And that reminded me, talking about that building, so one of the things we've tried in the past is don't have parking lots in front. And that's been a consistent thing that people have talked about. But that design essentially forced the building to be at the back, parking lot in the front. And yes, there are trees there now, but that's the exact opposite of what a lot of the UDO has evolved to become because of comments. And it, you know, it flip flopped that idea on its head. So I mean, are we barking at the wrong tree, so to speak, with what we're trying to push the UDO to have the buildings at the edge? Because do people really not want that, do they? I mean, but it's a consistent thing, people don't want to see parking lots either. And so it's like, I don't know, there's a conflict there, like you were just talking about.
The deeper I get into this, the more I realize there's a lot of conflicts. So what I would ask is between now and May, if this board would think, what should be the priorities? We can, we can try to fit all them together, but if there's one specific one or several you have, that's the feedback I'm looking for. What, what is the planning board, planning zoning board? What, what do you really want out of development?
And something else that reminded me, looking at this about the residential neighborhood. So the way these things work out, so like in my neighborhood Savannah, or any of these neighborhoods, hundreds of houses, thousands of houses are built. There's no requirement of trees between the houses. But just because someone else with a different name on their company builds a neighborhood next to it, bam, you got to jam some trees in there. So why, why do the people in the other neighborhood have to have trees? And yet the people living in one neighborhood built by the same builder don't have to have trees between their houses? Like you set up these weird little sort of separations of things that are not really, 20 years down the line, they're completely arbitrary because no one remembers that Pulte built this neighborhood over here and D.R. Horton built this neighborhood and M.I. Holmes built that neighborhood. They're just weird places where you have a bunch of trees and then places where you don't have trees. And people are looking at their back windows of their own house. I mean, like, if we don't have anything that requires, like, I think a lot of people would appreciate that if we were to somehow require trees between lots, like in the same neighborhood. And I don't know if that's something, I guess we can't do because of the, I mean, are we allowed to have any regulations on single-family or not?
I'm trying to remember the exact text and the statutes that give us the authority. And I think it, I don't think it says you can't do single-family detached. I think it says you can only do the following.
So how do we then get around that and require a buffer between two neighborhoods? I mean.
So.
Because like that's one, maybe it's just the way the law is, it just is at odds with itself. But like you're just, you're creating these different classes of people where some people get to have trees between the houses and some don't.
So I, I think that leads to another idea, which is maybe instead of, so if we can't, if the town can't require existing trees to be saved, there are sites that are two, two neighborhoods built about the same time that have buffer, landscape buffers between them. Maybe more landscape buffers could be installed within a neighborhood.
Right.
And grow over time. I don't think it's a bad idea at all, something I hadn't, hadn't thought of. Something else that, while we're talking about single-family homes and landscaping, something else we have kind of consistently heard recently is some of the, the neighborhoods that are maybe 15, more, 20 years old now, the trees in the front yard are growing, getting into infrastructure, sidewalks, things like that. So I, I don't have a specific plan, but I'm going to look more into that as far as should each home in Mooresville be required to have a tree? If it should, what sizing is appropriate, what types of tree may be to avoid?
I mean, the type is important there. I mean, because, you know, different trees have different roots and, you know, there's so many weird ways they're planted. I mean, some of them are planted up so high that the roots just like go out for miles on the surface. I mean, you know, there's a lot of sort of deep in the woods regulations with how you could do, I mean, how they are planted that I don't know if we can really get into.
Yeah, and, you know, and I think in my mind at least, the goals of planting any landscaping, any landscape buffers is that the trees will forever grow until they naturally die. naturally die. And, you know, clearly, we don't want to have to take them out if they're disturbing the infrastructure. So, yeah.
I mean, you go to places that have a huge trees, I mean, they just deal with it. They replace the sidewalks, or they grind them down. There's places they grind the sidewalks down here. I mean, just, you know, just because a tree is near a sidewalk, doesn't mean it's an emergency the tree has to be cut down. I mean, there are ways around that, but I'm not an arborist either, so I, you know.
All right, what slide am I on here? Did I finish this slide? So I guess the last point was require, I already said that, actually. So all right, so let's move on to the next slide if there's no more questions. So staff are also exploring other options for site design flexibility. So that's, that's consistently where we're from developers. We, we need some flexibility. Is there any, any flexibility we can get? And there, there's a few kind of thoughts that I brainstormed, but I've just listed some just general ideas as far as what flexibility maybe could we, could the town provide across the board for each site? Say, you know, if, if, if a certain site does want to preserve more trees up front, can we reduce setbacks in the back of the site to let the building get back? And really, if, if there are any thoughts on any of these today or at a future meeting, this is something I'm kind of interested in. Again, this goes back to what is the goal? What are some trade-offs that might, might be satisfactory?
So I'm going to ask a silly question around the trade-off.
Okay.
Do they need to be made? I mean, you know, at this point, there's a limited amount of land. There's still interest in developing it. If you upped the requirement for trees and made no trade-off whatsoever, is there anything to say that we wouldn't continue to have interest?
I, I think there would still be interest. I think there would still be interest, yeah.
So do we need to have any trade-offs?
I would say need, no. So, so let me, let me back up. So not only could this be for flexibility on every site, but I think that's a good point, though. But say, say someone comes in, and this is another idea, we're just bouncing around, maybe he won't propose, maybe he will. If, if somebody said, all right, we want to save a dramatically more amount of trees than required, but we want to be able to really concentrate our development on one area of the site, maybe that's where an incentive could come in. But, but to answer your question, I think we're still going to have development pressure no matter, you know, if we offer incentives or not.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of like the idea of a trade-off. If you're going to exceed and go above and beyond some other area, not necessarily, I mean, like significantly above, like if you were to, you know, save a lot of trees, I don't know, you'd have to, it's a very sort of subjective, case-by-case sort of thing.
Well, and, and something, so there, and the UDO has other incentives. And then something, when we talked with developers, they kept saying, well, provide incentives and we might be able to do it. The hard part, in my mind, as far as me particularly writing code, is where does, where does the balance come into play? And, and what, how can I write a code today or tomorrow that provides that incentive that actually works in real life down the road? So incentives are a little, little tricky in that regard.
Other thing to think about, too, is, I mean, housing affordability is a real touch point right now and always has been. I mean, the more trees you save, generally, the more you've got to spread the property, especially in a single family. You know, you've got to have larger lots and you can't put as many houses in there. And that means the land costs are going to drive the price of the houses up. And there's a balance, too. Because at the same time, you don't want to make every house in the town cost a million dollars. I, yeah, I mean.
I was thinking on the same lines, only I was thinking in developments, if you'd consider adding an extra floor to, to the UDO. So as people start to move in, that's going to be the question, and I need to make my profits on this. So if you're going to shrink my base foot, I need to go up. And that's something you should at least start to think of. You know, we went through the steps of recessing balconies on the, on the upper floor so it would look nice from the street level, but now we're saying we'd rather actually cover all those balconies by trees so we can pretend that there isn't a housing development back there. So do they need to recess that top floor now? Can we now say, if you leave the trees?
That'd be a good trade-off.
You don't need to do that, that's your trade-off. Or maybe you can add another penthouse on it. But somehow they're going to have to make up the money for losing all that square footage off of that property, so.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, those are all good thoughts. Yeah. So let me, let me keep moving here. Got a few more slides. Oh, so probably should have been earlier in the slideshow, but my, the goals of, of the staff recommendations generally are, I consistently hear, we want to require more trees to be preserved, but possibly increase flexibility in locations. So again, that goes back to what, what are the true goals of tree preservation? So, so sure, in established wetland, they'd have, a developer have to save trees anyways. Is that okay? Is that the goal, or is it beyond that? Require trees to be preserved in larger groups, just at least, again, in my own mind. And what I've heard in the surveys is people do like larger groups of trees. It would seem to have a bigger impact, not only on environmental features and, and other natural things, but also I suspect that larger groups of trees are easier to see and feel like some are being preserved, in large part due to property lines aren't visible when you're driving around. So if two properties have trees combined, it looks bigger. Again, that's in my own mind. So require a portion of trees along roads to be preserved while still maintaining that visual access to commercial sites. So this one could get a little tricky. I, I was thinking, I don't know what percentage would work. I haven't run any, any kind of analysis at all. But if the goal is to have trees along roads and be, be more seen, what is a percentage that could work both for, you know, a, a business owner and the town? The last thing was attempt to provide some either incentives or flexibility. And again, if this board does not, prefers, we don't provide incentives or flexibility, that, that's another option. That's, that's what I'm here to receive, the guidance from the board. Keep moving. Okay, so that was the end of kind of the, the tree preservation-based kind of broad recommendations. Any, any other comments, questions at this time about that? Seeing, seeing a lot of no's. Okay. So common open space. So again, common open space is non-residential development, so mostly commercial developments. Let me describe how it's kind of regulated. Based, it's based on the zoning district. It ranges between 5% and 15% of all non-residential developments, except for things like parks and/or rec space, et cetera, et cetera, things that already have active areas for people to do. So, sorry. So most zoning districts range between 5% and 10%, and that's based on the size of, the total size of a, of a parcel. So, you know, yeah. So the staff recommendations. So notice that sometimes these are, common open spaces incompatible for all uses and locations. So I've listed on here specifically industrial sites. People that are building kind of industrial sites are saying, we've got a lot of heavy equipment coming in and out. We don't necessarily have, want to have a space dedicated for people to, lack of a better word, hang out, to kind of spend some time, to get out, walk around. Another site, specifically, I called out the Fifth Third Bank at McCrimmon Corners, working with them on their common open space. They said, look, we're a bank. We don't want people sitting outside. We want them to come do their business and get out of here. We don't want to have any, any characters kind of hanging out, you know, whether they have good intentions or bad. So staff recommendation is to narrow common open space to certain uses and/or larger sites. Again, what is the true goal and where does it, where does it work? And then staff's also exploring options for minimum size requirements based on things other than the size of the property. So if you got a 15-acre tract, but you're only developing the space where most people are going to be on a certain side of it, does it make sense to have the, the open space based off that 15 acres rather than, you know, the, the clusters of maybe office buildings or something? So that, that's kind of the broad recommendations. Any questions on that?
No, those make sense.
Sorry.
Those make sense.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment about that. And you kind of stole my example. I was going to say, what's the purpose of open space for a bank that has a bench outside? And I, I currently, does, does Towne Mooresville accept payment in lieu for open spaces? No? So is there, I mean, is that something that staff is exploring, like, looking at, instead of developers having to put aside an open space that probably won't be used, especially in those industrial cases, where they can just put a fund towards the town and then the town can collect that money and use it to acquire their own open space?
So, no, we haven't looked into that. My initial instinct is that the, most of the payment in lose that developments provide have to be used in the area of which the development is, right? So, so for instance, transportation PIL has to be used directly, you know, next to that site. We have not explored that. I don't, let me, let me think on that a little more, because it also conflicts with our, with the, the town's regulated parkland payment in lose, which the state grants the town permission to, to accept. Having considered that, though, let me, let me do a little more research.
That might work for the bank, because it's in a retail area, you could do something somewhat nearby, and I have the bank, but yeah, for some industrial site.
Yeah. That, and that would, thinking further down the line, that would lead the town needing to buy more land to consolidate these things. So let me, let me do some more research into that. It's not a terrible idea. And then I forgot to mention, a common open space, of course, doesn't mean necessarily it'll be more green space. It can refer to stormwater ponds and benches and signage around that area. It can refer to walking paths. It can refer, you know, it can be a concrete walking path. It doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be more trees saved currently. Let's move on. Again, priority order, again, where is the common open space located? This priority order is not necessarily as strict as the tree preservation. It kind of lists it and recommends it in priority order. So it ranges anywhere from squares and plazas to formal gardens. It also includes utility easements and stormwater ponds. So again, if I, in my mind, when I think about this, it's kind of very broad, but doesn't really specify exactly what's, what's wanted.
Because if there's no priority order, imagine stormwater ponds are probably going to be used by a lot of people.
They are.
Because they don't have those anyway.
They are. They, they're capped at 75% of the square footage, but, and they have to have educational signage benches. But yes, it's, if you're already building a stormwater pond, why not use it on this? So staff, again, we're recommending, we're going to recommend, kind of narrowing down what is common space, where is it really appropriate? And then try to establish more of a, maybe not a priority order, but a, a, a smaller grouping of what the town's interests really are for a common open space.
Can I just comment on public art?
Sure.
As you start to go down that road, just know that gets really touchy around who gets to pick it, what's controversial, how do we protect it? And I, my personal property I lived on, after two years of people fighting over it, we ended up with stainless steel spray painted red that the contractor could have built. So, I mean, as, as you start to go down that, sometimes you put more money in the process and consultants and sensitivity, and nobody can agree on it, that it might cause more hard feelings than make the people that requested it happy. So you have to balance that very carefully.
Yeah, and I think for this public art, it wouldn't necessarily be, be a mural, but a more, I think in our, in my mind, our mind, it was, you know, maybe a fountain, maybe a small statue, something, something other than that, or something like one of those examples. But yeah, I, I am worried about those things you brought up as far as.
Who gets to be on that committee and, you know?
Yeah. Or, you know, does there need to be a committee for it at all? Is, is, what do we, yeah, all those things.
To the property owner, I'm assuming, right?
I'm doing, I'm doing more research into it. Yeah, that's, it's.
Well, it was safe.
You know, like Cary seems to be, because like this, it's on Cary Parkway and Evans Road, that, I can't remember the name of this apartment complex, where there's a Thomas Sayer piece, and he does all this dug earth, concrete structures. That is, you know, you know, there's nothing really controversial about it. It's just, you know, it's a large, tall, if you go by and see it, I mean, I've heard of people who kind of complain about it also, but I mean, I, you know, it's something that's just there to see, there's a little area around it. I mean, it's nothing that's crazy, but yeah. Yeah, I can see where it could be a problem.
I'm familiar with that slide. I asked the developers, is that where your sign's going to go? And they said, oh, no, it's an artwork piece that we actually had installed. So, oh, okay.
Well, he's a pretty, I mean, artist of pretty good repute. I mean, he's done a lot of projects in different areas.
Yeah, so, so ideas, maybe, how do we encourage things like that for, for common open space? Again, if you have any specific requests, would love to hear the ideas as we get into this. Where are we? And then parkland dedication. So we have common open space for commercial sites, parkland dedication for residential. Currently, most developments submit a payment in lieu to town. This is where it goes into public parks. And there's, there really hasn't been a consensus, I've heard, as far as, do we want maybe smaller parks within a development? Or do we want developments to keep submitting payment in lieu to the town? So at this time, we're, I do not anticipate recommending any changes to the current policy other than maybe small tweaks to the parkland design standards. So, so as far as, if somebody were to dedicate parkland, what, what does the town want that land to be shaped like, to be graded like? But, but no real changes there. And then landscaping. So current requirements, landscape buffers along the sides of property as well as along the street. We have vehicle use area landscaping, which is in addition to that, and then foundation plantings, which, along the front of a building. So a few anticipated changes. For the most part, I think this section works well. We do want to provide, staff will, is thinking about proposing something to provide incentives using existing trees as buffers. We've heard that, you know, existing trees are, are preferred. Again, if, if we don't want to provide incentives, you know, that, please, please let me know also. There's, the second bullet point there is green stormwater infrastructure, referred to as GSI. This is a new type or newer type of stormwater infrastructure. So instead of having a large stormwater pond, the water flows into more like, I'm, I'm probably going to butcher it, but, but linear, linear places for the water to go into the ground, and then it gets piped back out eventually. That's my general, I don't understand that much.
Rain garden or something different than that?
Instead of having a pond, it's more spread out along the buffer, so there's trees in it. And then there's certain kinds of soil and rock filled, filled in where the water slowly junk goes in the land. So I, that's my.
Your image of a rain garden or a bio-swell long-term of property is probably a good one.
And then just, just some other clarifications and cleanup items. All right, so that's the end of that. So next steps is my last slide. Tonight, again, kind of a pre-brief, kind of catching back up. April, in April, staff wants to post, so, so immediately after this meeting, I want to get to work on more specific things. So any more feedback you can provide tonight, excellent. Staff wants to draft those amendments, get them posted online for review. That can be by this board, it can be by town residents, it can be by other staff and other departments, and it can be by, reviewed by developers. So if you remember, last summer, a lot of changes were made to the McCrimmon extension, a new zoning district was installed, different kinds of requirements and uses. We did the same thing. We posted that, that text online, had a lot of really good feedback from developers. Again, creative kind of discussion, and not, not just saying we don't want to do this or that. So really looking forward to some feedback on the specific amendments. And then I plan to be right here at this podium, May 12th, to present the amendments, get more feedback from this board. At that meeting, again, you can recommend approval, denial, recommend approval, denial with changes, or you could ask to hear the item again at the June meeting. If you want to, this board wants to dig deeper into the amendments, you have more ideas and you want another month to kind of think about direction of the town and what, what the real goals are. So just say that, just to know, you don't, don't feel pressured to approve or deny at that meeting if you feel that the text amendments need more tweaks. And with that, that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? No more comments. I guess we commented out as we went.
Thank you.
So I don't believe we have any public comment, but do we have any public comment for general? We do not. Staff comments?
Just really to go over the latest newsletter with you. Just really to go over the latest newsletter with you. So in terms of new development applications that have come in, in February, we did receive an application for a new caliper collision that's on Air Tech Drive. No town council approvals in the month of February. We did approve a number of items, however, at the administrative level. The first was called mixed-use development, but it's a horizontal mixed-use project. It includes 150 multifamily units, a bank, and then there's a place for an additional commercial building to go in, but you'll see that the multifamily does not have commercial on the ground floor, so it's a multifamily building, and then a bank building next to it. But that is Morrisville Parkway, just next to Park West, so you'll probably begin to see some activity in that area soon, kind of back behind Trader, between Trader Joe's and Sheetz, if you could envision that. Also, Phase 1 of the aviation landing development was approved. I don't know how many of you recall that one, it's a planned development on Aviation Parkway, it came before you twice, second time for, for a minor amendment, but it has mixed use in the front and townhomes in the back. Phase 1 is the townhomes that would go in the back. That is what was approved and that you'll begin seeing construction on relatively soon. And then just in other news, again, welcoming Brooke to the department. We also welcomed a planner too, Suzie Russell, and she is also coincidentally from Southern Pines, so we stole two of their finest. They both recently began with us. The responses to the RFQ for the Affordable Housing Implementation Project are still under review, we're interviewing and working with consultants through that selection process, and hope to have a contract with someone there soon. We did also issue the RFP to align the UDO overall with the 2021 land use plan to implement the vision of that plan. That RFP also included some additional small area planning for what we refer to as TOD West and South. So those have been submitted, and we've just begun the review process of those as well. That is all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments? David?
No, sir.
Ken?
Actually, good to actually see everyone face masks off.
Ken? Christine?
Thanks for the presentation tonight from Chris and also District EJ's performance manager, and she's gone, but it was great. Thanks.
Christine, do you have any?
No.
Mine either, so. Do we have a motion adjourned? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ken, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.